Excuse me. I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting of December 17th, 2024, to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones on silent. The invocation will be led by Councilmember Peter Heck, the pledge by Councilman Brian Soller.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege and freedom we have of being able to gather together this evening to discuss city business. We ask that you give the staff and council wisdom and clarity in their decision-making. Keep us mindful that we serve the residents of this city. We ask you to watch over the men and women who serve in our military the world over. Keep them safe in these troubling and turbulent times. We ask also for your blessing on our first responders, including our police and fire departments, along with our EMS personnel. Please keep these brave men and women safe in their duties to protect and care for the residents of this city. We pray now particularly for Officer McClure and the other individual that were involved in a vehicular accident earlier today. We ask that your healing power will work for both of those individuals. We ask also for the safety of those traveling during this holiday season. Thank you for the honor and privilege we have to serve the residents of this great city, and keep us mindful of the reason for this season. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
By the blessings of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Present.
Councilmember Cross.
Here.
Councilmember Heck.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Nesser.
Present.
Councilmember Soller.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consent agenda. As a reminder, all items under the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request must be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. It roll call.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regional intergovernmental updates. Anyone have anything they want to present? Yes.
This past Friday, the mayor and myself were able to attend the Pinell County League of Cities Annual Final Meeting for the Year down at Rawhide. And the economic forecast was presented to us. And the outlook is pretty decent. One of the big things that they talked about is that, you know, they see a kind of a slowdown in overall construction and whatnot. But the housing appears to be getting closer to an overabundance of multifamily homes, which in a way is a good thing because that, once we have an abundance of choices, should start driving prices down. So as far as running into a recession, the big economic forecast is that we've avoided that and that it's going to be pretty good. So that's about all I have.
Anyone else? Well, I've got a few things in the aspects on it. One of the things that I did this past week was I attended the Water Rights Day from the Gila River Indian Reservation. And they have a 20-year agreement that they were, I'll say, celebrating the aspect for over water rights. And they also showed and addressed a very interesting and successful project that they've been doing and working on and extending. And that is, they're putting solar panels over the canals. And this is doing two things in the aspect on it. Number one is keeping the evaporation of the water from out of the canals down considerably. They've noticed that they've had more water as a result of the areas that they're doing, already done it in. They also noticed that the water is going to be cooler in temperature because it doesn't get heated up by the sun. They also noticed that it was also cooling the solar panels down, which actually allowed them to produce more electricity, you know, better. So it's a project that they're wanting to continue on. They have a little over 200 miles of canal system in their area. And they think that this is going to be tremendous. They're looking to be totally, I'm going to say, efficient in the aspect where they have zero carbon use. No electricity will be needed because it will all be produced all by themselves. Today, at the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, we voted on and approved a change in the name. It is now going to be called Mesa Gateway Airport. That's actually a little better in the aspect on it. But one of the big problems is that, you know, if you're elsewhere, who knows where Mesa is compared? But people definitely know where Phoenix is. So that has been a little bit of something that they're going to be needing to work on to make sure that it's properly tied together. One of the things that I did this past week also, those of you that know me, I was in the Air Force. My first four and a half years in the Air Force, I got to work on a KC-135. And it was, they were fairly new aircraft, newer aircraft in the aspect, I should say. They were made in the late 50s and early 60s. And it was something that was unique in the aspect, and I really enjoyed it. Well, the Air National Guard took me out this past week, and I flew with them. And we did an in-flight refueling of a F-35, which is shown right here. I tried to give you a little bit of a video, but it won't allow me to send it out. But it is something unique. You're flying at roughly 25,000 foot, and you're two planes flying together at approximately anywhere from 20 to 25 foot apart from one another, and putting on fuel onto that other aircraft. And we did this down in the Tucson area. So something that I thought was unique and brought back some memories for me. Also, we had, the police did a program where they have the shop with a cop aspects on it, where the police officers will take some kids out and take them over to, I believe it was Walmarts where they went. But they were able to spend some money that was given to them. And we had, last I heard, it was over 150 kids were involved in this. Seventy-five police officers involved in this, in the total shop with a cop. And it is, well, there's a long line, as you can see, the long line of cars with their sirens on and everything. The kids are all excited. They got a free trip all the way to Walmart and back. Okay, that's all I have that I can remember for anyway. Oh, yeah, there we are. I forgot. Christmas lighting. We were all out there for the lighting of the Christmas tree. And it was, you know, something that's unique in the aspect on it that I love to do in the aspects on it because to get the kids to do the countdown, and they're all excited to do it. And this year, it actually had numbers on the trees. So the kids had to catch up to the numbers. And it was unique in the aspect on it. So you can see the three of us out there, actually, the four of us out there. And it was a huge celebration, and everybody that I've talked to loves the tree. All right. City managers report.
Your Honor, thank you. Good evening, Brian Powell. City managers, just a couple items we want to share. One is that this last week was the Community Open House of Superstition Vista, and we had a couple council members come. We didn't get a great photo. There are more photos out there. Councilmember Cross and Councilmember Soller were there representing, along with several departments. They estimated an RSVP count of over 1,000 people that came that day. They were coming to get their FOB cards or their ability to go into their community center, which has a weight room, a big pool, a splash pad, and a park. And we were there to do the ribbon cutting. In addition, I just wanted to share with everybody in the community tonight your postcard digital that went to all the cities and towns, mayors, and city councils across the state, wishing everybody wonderful and safe. Happy holidays from the City of Apache Junction. And that concludes my report tonight.
Okay, announcement and current events. Eli.
I think that's it. No events.
Nope.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to take the agenda item number 11 from New Business and Presentation and Consideration for Resolution Number 24-42. Zach. Oh, there you are. I lost you.
Mayor, Council, Zach Sacas with Greenberg Chorig. We serve as special district counsel to Superstition Vista, CFD Number Two. Glad you found me. Usually, a bond attorney is best neither seen nor heard, so, but I was hiding out in the back there. When we originally formed superstition, when this council originally formed superstition vista CFD Number Two, the developer of the property informed us that we would need to eventually amend the boundaries to carve out certain areas to encourage commercial development. The board of the district approved that. This council, reminder, at the time of formation, we entered into an agreement. It's called a District Development Financing Participation Waiver and Intergovernmental Agreement. It's essentially the rules of the road for how the district will operate, and the city is a party to that agreement. So the boundaries have been amended. We are making, potentially, if approved, well, the district board has approved it, asking for council to also consider a minor correction. And if you go to the last slide, Matt, thanks. We had brought this in front of the board and the council previously. Can we do one more? Thanks. So the Pinell County identified one minor mismatch between the revised boundary and what Arizona State Landhead recorded by about 33 and a half feet. So the only item in front of council tonight is, again, the city as a party to that development agreement. We're asking for your approval to amend the legal description that's attached to that development agreement to match up with what the county has requested. Nothing proposed tonight, or being asked of this city council, or what was asked of the district board, will raise property taxes or create an additional burden for homeowners within the district. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion for Resolution 2024-42?
Mayor.
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number 24-42 approving the corrected legal description of district boundaries in the superstition vista community facilities, District Number Two, as set forth in the amended intergovernmental and development agreement be approved.
Second.
Moved in second. It roll call.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consideration of application of a new Series 10 beer and wine liquor store license for ARCO AM PM gas station. Abby.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Back on November 14th, we received in the city clerk's office an application for a new Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license for the ARCO AM PM new gas station on the corner of Ironwood and Broadway. The applicant was notified of the public hearing tonight and is here for any questions you may have. A notice of public hearing was posted at the establishment on November 26th. Correspondence related to inspections with our four entities of Apache Junction Police Department, Building and Safety Division, Planning and Zoning, and the superstition fire all came back with recommending approval. I do want to note that we received comments from Development Services in the Fire District, and as you all well know, it's still under construction, soon to be final inspection, which will meet the building code compliance in order to obtain their certificate of occupancy. The property is properly zoned, B1 commercial, and does meet the separation requirement for schools. And as I mentioned, all four entities did recommend this for approval. So now it's in your hands to make that decision.
Okay. Any questions from council? Does the applicant wish to speak?
No.
Nope. Okay. And since this is a public hearing, it's now open to the public. There's a five-minute time limit for, with a one-minute warning that you will hear. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone want to speak on this? Everyone stay silent, okay? I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the application for a new Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license for ARCO AM PM located at 745 South Ironwood Drive, Apache Junction, Arizona, be recommended to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. It roll call.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, presentation, discussion, and public hearing, consideration of ordinance number 1560.
Nick.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, City Council. I am Nick Leftwich, Planner for the Development Services Department of the City of Apache Junction. And I'll be presenting the case information for Case P2464PZ with ordinance 110, or 1560. This is a rezoning of the Second Avenue and Colt Road. So this request is from Tim and Christie Sheehan to rezone the north half of their property located at the southwest corner of Second Avenue and Colt Road. It is a bit of a unique request by an applicant to willingly downzone a portion of their property for the purpose of building their own personal home. The proposed zoning change would be from high-density, multiple-family residential RM2 to general rural, low-density, single-family residential RSGR. Depicted here is a zoning map showing those different zoning designations. The brown is the RM2 designation, while the green that we also see in the area is the RSGR designation. As we, the highlighted portion in the center, highlighted in blue, is the proposed subject area, specifically the north half of a property. As we see, it is currently vacant right now. And the applicant actually owns quite a bit of the properties in the areas immediately surrounding this. They own apartments directly to the northwest, which is in the brown. And then to the southwest of their property, in the red, you see a couple of their properties that they own and manage as well, as they currently operate multifamily in the area. Directly on the northeast corner of Winchester and Fourth Avenue is their office from which they operate. Shown here, zooming out a little bit more, is the general plan land use map. This property is located within the downtown mixed-use designation area, which is generally designated for higher-density, multiple-family residential and commercial uses. Notably, however, this general plan does not require an amendment, as the general plan specifically provides an exception when rezoning to a lower residential density. So in this case, it doesn't conflict with the general plan amendment process. And in assessing this, we've spoken with the applicant about the impact of the area and making sure that ultimately the general plan goals will be facilitated. We see this as a negligible impact on the long-term vision of the plan. Shown here is a basic site plan of where they, how they propose to develop the property. Again, it would just be for their own single-family home. The south line would be a new property line drawn following this rezoning, as it would need to be split so as to not be split-zoned. But the southern portion would still remain multiple-family residential, while the northern portion would be the RSGR, single-family residential, on which they would put their house. The applicant has followed all of the necessary public input and notification procedures. Signs were posted on the site, and notices were sent out to the property owners within the notification radius. They also held a neighborhood meeting at the Apache Junction Multi-Generational Center on October 23rd. One of the neighbors attended and spoke about trying to get neighborhood support for this. And so ultimately, they did end up getting a petition in favor of this rezoning, and that was provided within the staff report. On November 12th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this case and voted four to two to recommend the denial of this rezoning case, citing concerns with the general plan. The applicant is here tonight with a presentation, and they look forward to being able to directly answer any questions that you might have for them. But if you have questions for staff, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions? Yes.
Yeah. Nick, so the general plan does have provisions in it for rezoning from a high-density to a lower-density.
Your Honor. Councilmember Cross, yes. Within the general plan amendment process, it specifically gives an exception to residential zonings when rezoning to a lower residential density. Otherwise, we typically have to change the general plan land use map.
So obviously, that was thought out when the general plan was being put together and presented to the voters. Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
They're, this is going to be their own home, right? And they're going to be living right around where they own other apartment complexes. I actually like that. It puts them right in the middle of their own apartment complexes so they can make sure that things are going okay. And if we have any problems, we know where to go. So I actually am good with this.
Yes. The planning and zoning reported to denial. Was the general plan the reason? I mean, did they sprinkle anything else in there? Any concerns about the neighbors or anything like that? Was it just, the general plan doesn't call for it, so we're going to deny? Is that, is that what their denial was based on?
Your Honor, Vice Mayor Schroder. That is correct. They, there wasn't any issues with the neighborhood. The consensus was that they believed that we wanted to keep as much high-density, multifamily residential within the downtown core, and as there are our policies within the general plan aiming towards having a dense downtown, they believed that this didn't mesh with that plan, and that was the reason cited.
But at the same time, our general plan has options to amend.
That is correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Of course, there's a lot of, I would say, GR property all around it as well in the aspect, currently in this general plan area for high-density. So that would have to be, you know, it's not meeting the whole goal of the general plan in that area as well either, correct?
That is correct, that there is quite a bit of RSGR, low-density, single-family residential, immediately adjacent. So this is characteristic of other properties immediately surrounding it as well. There's a good mix of both high-density and low-density immediately adjacent to each other here.
You said that the applicant wants to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Tim Sheehan. This is my wife, Christie Sheehan. We're the applicants, owners of the property. Take just a short minute, explain why we want to rezone it to our own house. Nick covered quite a bit of it. We do want to rezone this for our personal residence. We currently live in Queen Creek. Would like to move right on top of our properties. We'll actually be touching two different properties. We do run the family business. We have 12 parcels, all within, I guess the map shows what's around. Nick showed that too, but 12 parcels, all within a half mile of this property, which consists of 57 current apartments, one rental house, and our office. We started purchasing these properties back in 2004. We purchase properties, we don't sell them, we're not flippers. We did build 10 apartments right through COVID in 2020, 2021. They are, of the parcels here, it is the north units, the north group, the south unit there. We added on to existing properties. There was eight apartments with 22 storage units, and we added 10 more to finish that build out there. We've owned this parcel. We've owned this parcel for nine-plus years. We've come to really like it where it is. It's off two sort of side roads in downtown that don't go through. It is sort of a leveler piece. It would be a nice place to build our house on and cut out the two acres, keeping the south portion RM2 to eventually build multifamily on. Our plan is to start, if this is approved, to start meeting with architect and builder the first of the year, first of two thousand and twenty-five, and get the ball rolling with this. We're not trying to rezone this and let it sit. We do want to move forward with it rapidly. We did have the meeting, as Nick stated. We had a resident that lives just north of the property, a couple parcels, that was in favor of it. He's the one that put the petition together, and other neighbors signed that. I think you guys have copies of that. We, I haven't, the other neighbors I've talked to, I've received no negative feedback. They would rather have a single-family home there than multifamily right on their back property or to the south of them. We do take a lot of pride in the properties we own. We have been managing them since two thousand and four. This is Reed's Tire Shop that is currently our office. This is just one of the transformations that we did. This was in two thousand and nineteen. We did this, this one, and this is currently what it looks like today. And all the other properties, we really try to keep the landscape up, keep the paint, keep the properties good. We do, yeah, a lot of pride with our properties and enjoy running it. We are, our son, who's twenty, is also, works with us. He does a lot of work there too, and he's going to currently, or he will be moving out to the area the first part of two thousand and twenty-five, probably by March. So, yeah, we'd love if you guys would approve this rezoning to make Apache Junction our home. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have for us.
Any questions? Yes.
Obviously, you've put a lot of effort into making a good business for yourself in Apache Junction, and we all support that very much. But I have one question. So you've owned this one parcel you're looking to develop. You've owned it for nine years. Was there a reason why you chose not to develop that? Was there a plan all along to make it your own personal residence?
So my father has owned property in California for years, and I've just sort of run small businesses for years. And we started acquiring properties, and some of them are just land, and some of them have communities on them. So as they come available within this little area, we do try to purchase them. This one came available, we purchased it for a good price. Our original goal was to build multifamily on it. With the way where the sewer is and where water lines are and things, it would be very difficult and very expensive to build on it currently, until those two came in the area. Just to build a single-family home on it to bring in Arizona water would be close to a hundred thousand dollars today just to build our house. So if it was multifamily, it would be a lot more than that, and I don't know what a sewer would cost. Sewer is about a half-mile away. If we could tie into that one, I don't know the elevation and everything. So that's why we have not developed that currently.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, any discussion from council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I personally welcome the idea that individuals who are vested in this community reside in this community. I think it's nothing but a win.
Anyone else?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I echo Vice Mayor Schroder and Councilmember Soller in the same regards. I think it's a great idea having the landlord right in amongst his business. And he can address issues that sometimes do come up, and he can address them right away. And we don't have to try and get somebody to respond to us that is living in California or in New York State or overseas, which we do have properties that are like that. So to have the landlord right here in town, it's a great idea.
Yes.
Thinking about what the Planning and Zoning Commission, how they evaluated this application. I understand that, that it's, you know, we developed this master plan, and I always, I always get concerned when we deviate from that, because are we setting a precedent now saying, okay? So the master plan doesn't really mean anything, because they'll change that. So I think there's a matter of looking carefully at that. In my mind, is this something that warrants that consideration? I believe it does, because they're, they're making this home for themselves. They're invested, obviously, in the community now, so. But understanding that, there's a part of me that's like, well, here we go. Now we're going to, we're going to have people now come all over the place and want to change or rezone land or parcels to fit their needs. And we have to be careful about that. But I do, these folks seem like they're really good, decent folks that are trying to help support our community.
Your Honor, I understand what Peter is saying. However, the fact that the master plan allows for it to be lowered to this is already in there, so it's not actually a change to that. It's not like when somebody comes in and says, I want to change it from single-family to multi or from commercial to multi. This is already allowed in the master plan. So I think when that was designed, it was designed not just for that day, but for the future until the next plan comes along that is moving on again. So I think we're well within our lane.
All right. Since the public hearing, I'm now open to the public hearing. There's a five-minute time limit. With a one-minute warning you will hear, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to speak on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Steve Harshman. I'm a resident of Apache Junction. And I would like to speak against this zoning change, and primarily for the reasons that the Planning and Zoning Commission had, and that changing the general plan, it was a plan that was voted upon by the public. And I know last spring, when we had a much more complex and different type of a zoning situation on Goldfield Road, a lot of you spoke very eloquently to the fact that the citizens of Apache Junction had approved the general plan, and that the general plan should be maintained. And I think that case kind of still applies here, even though it's a different, totally different situation. That vein of thought applies. We have a plan that will provide for a very wonderful downtown. We've spent a lot of time, effort, and money on it. And this would be one step towards changing more, perhaps, of the general plan without actually people approving of that. And I would also note that one of the changes that happens, and these are the things sometimes that sneak up on you on these things, is when this property gets split in half, and the top half of, north half of it is, becomes residential, then there will be no developer-built sidewalks or street infrastructure improvements along that section of Colt and Second Avenue, because there will be a residential property. And it's my understanding that it's very, very difficult to try and force these folks to build that infrastructure. As a builder development, we'd get that. We'd get the sidewalks, we'd get whatever street improvements needed to be. It would support the two thousand and nineteen Active Transportation Plan with sidewalks and a bike lane on Fourth. And we have, we have a possibility of losing that when we split this property. And it also really reduces, it's one step to reducing the headcount. I know there's arguments about that. But we're trying to attract small businesses, restaurants into our concentrated downtown. And any business who's going to look at this is going to be looking at, oh, you guys have decided that it's okay to reduce the headcount, so maybe I won't have this number of customers that I had planned. So I think there's a lot of negatives, or at least a lot of things about this property that should be considered more in-depth than we've done to now. And it would be appropriate to support the Planning and Zoning Commission and reject this request. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Justin Miller. I live at one twenty South Colt. The first time I met the Sheehans was back in October. I did not know who owned those properties that sit behind mine. The Sheehans, we have lived in that property for, our property, for twenty-four years. And the Sheehans, they run a really tight ship. We've never had one single issue in twenty-four years that we've lived there. I encourage you guys to please approve this. We look forward to having the actual business owners as neighbors. I think there's a huge benefit into that. And I encourage all of you to, encourage all of you to please vote, vote yes to change this. And that's all I have.
I just wanted to add, I'm Sharman Miller, wife of Justin. We've raised our two children there. We know several other people have raised children in our little neighborhood. And we have a few older people that live there. And we've enjoyed having that little small-town feel of being there, but having that closeness of family feel. Oh, we do know all of our neighbors, the two of us. We have met them all over the last twenty-four years. And we've seen it grow around us, but we stay there because it still kind of has that home feel, which I feel them moving in and making it their home just south of us is going to be a big benefit to our somewhat small, growing family. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cody DeFer. I live at one ninety South Colt. I'm actually Justin Sharman's neighbor. So if this was approved, the Sheehans would be my neighbor's town the side of the second. I moved my family here to live in this area. I like the open. I don't need the infrastructure of lights and sidewalks. I like the larger, you know, property areas and having good neighbors. They, they own all of that land around us, all the apartment complexes. It's always very respectful. All of their, all the people that live in their apartments are, you know, there's no drunken parties or loud noises or anything like that. So I have to imagine if that's how they run their properties, then that's the kind of people that they are. I would really like to call them neighbors. I would like to have that property, just to the south of me, be a residential property and not an apartment complex. And having met them one time before, I think that they'll be fantastic neighbors, and I would, I would like to vote yes on this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this?
Donakar, Apache Junction resident. I know petitions don't mean anything to the city, but I still think that the property should be allowed to just have one home on that section of the property. I mean, we talk about the fact that we want to keep a lot more horse property out this way. And to have everybody right up against each other, I'm against it, have been against it. I mean, I don't like the fact that they have a mess of apartments, but from talking to them, they're at least doing background checks and stuff like that, which I appreciate, so we don't let a mess more riffraff in. All right, that's all I have to say, thanks.
Anyone else? Not seeing any movement. I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion for, yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen sixty be read by title only. In the reading of the entire ordinance, be waived by the city clerk.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor?
Do a second motion.
Mayor, I move that ordinance...
I'm going to read first. Thank you.
Get ahead of myself.
That's okay.
So excited.
We're pushing you. Okay.
Test, test, right. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, for ordinance number fifteen sixty, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for the property described in rezoning case P dash twenty-four dash sixty-four PZ. A request by Tim and Christie Sheehan from high-density, multiple-family residential RM2 to general rural, low-density, single-family detached residential RSGR, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Okay, now.
Mayor, I move that ordinance fifteen sixty, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yeah, based on the fact that the general plan allows for this, yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. New business, presentation and discussion on possible consideration of rejection of proposals for Prospector Park drainage improvement. Liz.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, members of the council. Liz Langabach, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here with our new purchasing administrator, Sherelle Waskowitz. She's over there in the corner. Oh, she gets to be brought up. Sorry, Sherelle. Brand-new. So she has been working with us on the RFB process for this. Brian, did you?
No, I'm just going to say we're super happy to have Sherelle. And this is four weeks now, Sherelle? Six weeks.
Six weeks.
Lives in the city. And I've actually known Sherelle a long time, living in our neighborhood and Apache Junction resident.
Welcome.
Sherelle is one of the newest members of the Finance Department, and she works with all of our departments on our procurement and some of our purchasing things. So this project was one of the first ones that we got to work with her on. But I'm here tonight just to share with you a little bit about consideration of actually rejecting these bids, and I'll move right into that quickly. So just so you have an idea of where the project is located and what it was for, Prospector Park, kind of on this outfield fence line of Field Three and Four out there, we have the wash that wraps around. And just over time, that wash and the amount of water that we're receiving in some of those big storms was really causing us a lot of headache out here at Prospector. Our guys, after a major storm, we would end up having all the sediment that would wash from the desert all onto the fields. That was causing us a lot of problems on those softball fields, requiring a whole lot of extra work from our guys. So about a year ago, we started working with the Public Works Department and Sam in the Development Services Department, and then brought on one of the architect firms from Public Works On Call Services to just reevaluate the existing drainage, to see what kind of modifications might be needed, and to relook at, you know, things have changed a lot in the landscape over the years. We finished those design drawings at the beginning of this fiscal year, and then we went out for bid on this project. We posted this on October nineteenth, and bids were opened on November thirteenth. And we received seven bidders, which we think is really awesome. But unfortunately, they were wet way over, you know? And if they were a little bit over, you know, I think we would probably be reconsidering finding the money. But we budgeted three hundred thousand based on some of our numbers early on last year in the design process. We know there's probably some room for inflation on that, but the lowest bidder was at five hundred and fifty thousand, and we just really felt like two hundred and fifty thousand over budget was really not something that we felt comfortable bringing to you. So what our staff recommendation is that we reject the bids at this time and that we go back out. We think we can do a little bit more work with the engineering firm to reduce some of the scope. We added in a whole lot of riprap and some other things that the Public Works Department felt would help us with maintenance and some of those things. But we really feel strongly that we can sit down with our engineering firm, maybe take another look at it, and then put it back out again and see what we get. So that's staff recommendation tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions about the project.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Liz, do you feel like some of the items you're gonna, you would take out when you go back out for bid is two hundred thousand dollars?
So, um, actually, the amount of extra riprap that, um, in the Public Works Department, Emil, who's been close with us on this project, was just recommending is quite a bit. It's, um, the extra riprap is probably in the world of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and a lot of that was really, you know, stuff that we could add later. It's stuff that, um, is not, you know, it's really gonna help with the impact during a really huge storm, you know, a hundred-year storm type of thing. Um, so we really do feel like just taking another stab at it. As you know, we brought to you the SuperSon Shadows Park Drainage Project. They're very similar. Um, and it's a humongous difference in the pricing. And I just, we, we don't feel like in three months, that pricing really should be in the three hundred thousand dollar world.
So, I mean, this original, um, situation, I mean, is this the right way? I mean, I would rather be over budget and do it right the first time, and then have to come back afterwards and then pay more to them to reinstate some of these things you take out. You see what I'm saying?
Yep, absolutely.
And then it goes through.
Yeah, we, I understand that. And, you know, when we first, so we've been working with, um, Strand Architects. They are, um, on Public Works On Call list. They did an extensive drainage report early on, um, this last fiscal year. And they feel that we do not need all of that, um, in that project, and those are things that we can add. Our guys have also done a ton of pre-work. So we've, um, you've approved all of our curbing project that we've done around Prospector Park. That helped divert a whole lot of water, um, into the right locations. All of the birmingham that our guys have done around, um, the backside of, uh, the softball fields has improved conditions tremendously in the last six month. Well, after our last major rain last year, that we saw a ton of improvement just from those two things alone. So we really feel like, um, you know, doing some minor modifications and then putting it back out again and looking to see what that climate would look like. Um, we do think that we would get some different results. And none of the things that we would be taking out couldn't be re, very easily put back in at some later point. So again, it's just reinforcing banks with riprap. That can be done at any time. And so, you know, I think we feel like we could, we would prefer to stay closer to budget. We know we're not gonna probably come, you know, close to three hundred thousand dollars. We'd like to go out and look and see. We know we can find some of that, um, elsewhere within our budget. We just really feel like two hundred and fifty thousand is quite a lot for maybe not what's worth, uh, the project.
So I, I mean, I'm just trying to understand the original proposal. Are, are we, is a good, good analogy to say we're going from state of the art to, it'll work?
Um, I think a better analogy is saying that, so in Emil's perspective, so there's these little culvert crossings here. Um, his concern really was that as this whole area fills up with water, that we might see bank, um, erosion as water's in there. Our guys, so Dave Butler, Matt King, all of our guys that work that, they see it every single day. They work it all the time. They really felt strongly that we don't see that type of erosion. Um, and we've had some really, really big storms out there for a while. And so, um, they really feel like we can manage a lot of this, and, and they just really hate spending money that isn't possibly necessary.
Your honor?
Yes.
Liz, um, when the bids went out, had you already made the, um, curbing, um, improvements? Or, you know, now that you've made some of these other improvements from work in the fields, can these potential new bidders see that and be able to reduce their overall costs?
Absolutely. So the good thing about this, so we'll go out again. Everybody will be recontacted. We will have a pre-bid meeting, so that way people can kinda come out, they can reassess it. There will be different numbers in there that they're gonna see right away, um, have different, you know, that they'll have different unit costs that they'll be bidding on. So, um, we really feel like they're gonna be able to see where there's some, um, hopefully savings in that. Also to know that we're not willing to pay five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if somebody wants, you know, sometimes, I think Dave shared this with you last time, they just put out numbers. It's like, well, hey, if I get it, and then I'm gonna get it at this price. Um, other times, we might learn that five hundred and fifty is the best we can do. And I think we'll learn that, uh, the next time. But we just think that just doing our little bit of due diligence for that amount of money, you know, you guys entrust our department with, um, so much, we're very thankful for. So we just always wanna make sure that we are doing the best we can for the city.
So, um, I think you're kinda in the right direction in this regards, because I see construction as a whole slowing down. I know our company is, you know, starting to tighten up their numbers when it comes to putting bids out. Um, yeah, for the last few years, it's just throw them a number, they need a number. And it's quite possible that's what you got this time is just, we really don't want the job, but if we get it, we, we can man it on overtime, we'll get the job done, and we won't lose money. Now that things are tightening up a little bit in the economy, maybe you'll actually get a, a true bid this time.
We hope so.
I have to apologize, I just got a cramp in my leg.
Are there any other questions for me?
This man a banana.
That's right.
It's a potassium.
Okay. Do I have a motion on rejection of the proposal?
Your honor?
Yes.
I move that the rejection of proposals for Prospector Park drainage improvements, RFB number, uh, P, PNR PP Drainage, twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven, be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, your honor.
Thank you. Discussion and consideration of employment agreement with Thomas C. McDermott. Joel.
Mr. Mayor, member of city council. It is my pleasure and it is my honor to introduce, uh, Mr. McDermott. Before I do that, let me talk about the recruitment a little bit. The recruitment opened in October, and it went for about a month long. There were about twenty applicants received, uh, or applications, I'm sorry. And then council decided to interview ten highly, highly qualified individuals in November. Thomas, Thomas McDermott was chosen, and he signed a contract on November, uh, December eleventh. It is attached to the packet. He will start on January second. I wanna give thanks to the, uh, Administrative Office of the Courts, of the Supreme Court, and also to HR in helping council, uh, come to this conclusion. Now, Mr. McDermott. He graduated from Saint Joseph's University in Pennsylvania. Mr. Soller, Pennsylvania?
Great.
Nineteen ninety-seven. He earned his bachelor degree in biology and mathematics. He then went to U of A. Sorry, Brian, I know you like ASU, but he went to U of A College of Law. Graduated in two thousand and three with a Juris Doctorate degree. He was a deputy county attorney. He went to work immediately with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office from two thousand and three to twenty, uh, twenty twelve. He specialized in vehicular homicide cases, aggravated assault, felony DUIs, and a bunch of misdemeanors. He then switched to private practice, to the law offices of Michael, Michael Cantor from twenty twelve to twenty fourteen. Then he decided to go back to prosecution, this time in Penal County. And he served in that capacity as a deputy county attorney and then a bureau chief, uh, from up to twenty twenty-two. For, as a deputy and then twenty-two to present, he was the bureau chief of major crimes, handled murder trials and many other types of crimes, and also appellate, uh, matters. He also supervised many attorneys during his career and administrative staff. He's familiar with all levels of all courts, uh, city, JP Courts, Superior Court, appellate, uh, Superior Court, also Court of Appeals, and the Arizona Supreme Court. He's highly respected in the county attorney world and also from defense attorneys. In addition, he's had, uh, most impressive, uh, professional references. He is here tonight and would like to make some remarks. So I think you can call him up.
Okay. Mr. McDermott?
Good, good evening, uh, Mayor Wilson and distinguished members of the council. Mr. Stern, thank you very much for that, uh, for that wonderful introduction. I do appreciate it. I, I just had one correction. I was, uh, after twenty twenty-two, I, um, I was not the bureau chief of major crimes, but I was, uh, a, a deputy county attorney within the Major Crimes Bureau, specializing mostly in, uh, appeals and post-conviction relief petitions. Um, I did try one, uh, first-degree murder, uh, case last year that was, uh, a conviction. And, uh, I've argued since, since twenty twenty-two, I've, I've been before the, uh, Court of Appeals on a few occasions, on several, several appeals. Um, but thank you very much. I really, I do appreciate, uh, the confidence that, uh, that, that the board has expressed in my abilities. Uh, and I, I hope that I will, uh, do my best to make the municipal court a model of fairness and efficiency. Um, it's gonna take me some time, certainly, to get to know the staff. I, I think they're gonna be the most valuable resource I'll have to learning how the court runs, how the court operates, and how, um, I can make the court, uh, run efficiently to make sure that our citizens are ensured that their voices are heard when they come to the municipal court. You know, most people, um, who ever have contact with the, uh, court system and, 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 um, and certainly the criminal court system, it happens in municipal court. It doesn't happen in the Superior Court in Florence or in Phoenix. It happens in the municipal court system. Um, and so when people come, uh, I wanna make them feel that they are, uh, that their voices are being heard, that they have an opportunity to be heard. I, I've, I've found that when, um, you know, I've done major felonies, uh, but I've also worked in the justice courts with a lot of pro-state litigants. And I've found that, um, the one thing I've found over and over again is, uh, when you do listen to the pro-state litigants, when you listen to the pro-state or pro-per defendants, um, you get a lot more out of them, uh, and they do appreciate it. And they feel like they've at least been heard, um, before you move forward with, um, resolving the case or going to trial. Uh, and so I'm, I'm hoping to bring that same spirit to the municipal court, uh, when I'm sitting on the, on the bench, um, and trying cases, hearings, hearing orders of protection, uh, and bringing my years of experience, uh, within the criminal justice system to the citizens of Apache Junction. And I do, uh, I cannot, uh, begin to express my profound thanks. I know that you had very highly qualified applicants to choose from, uh, and to interview. Uh, and I, I know that you, you, it must've been a very, very difficult decision for you, but I do appreciate your confidence, uh, in my abilities to make, uh, the justice system, the, the municipal court a model of fairness and efficiency. Um, thank you, and I'm, I'm, I'm open any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Your honor?
Yes?
I'd just like to say welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor.
The interview we had conducted with you, spot on.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do I have a motion on employment agreement?
Your honor?
Yes.
I move that the employment agreement appointing Thomas C. McDermott as the Apache Junction presiding magistrate for a term of two years from January second, twenty twenty-five through January second, twenty twenty-seven pursuant to Apache Junction City Code Volume One, five dash one dash three be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
How about those sun devils?
Okay. Public, uh, hearing, or public hearing, excuse me. Call to the public. I would like to remind everyone, the call of public is a courtesy and not required by law. It's a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Underneath the open, under the open meeting law, council cannot engage in the discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three limit, minute time limit for each speaker. And I got a few here, so James Bowreider?
My name's James Bowreider. I live in Apache Junction, ten fifty-four East Roosevelt. Councilmembers, mayor? I come to you today to speak about esophageal cancer, which is a very little-known cancer, but it's on the rise. Very, very prevalent. Some people call it Barrett's esophageal cancer. It attacks men mostly, but women can get it also. My wife passed away from it two and a half years ago. It's a very aggressive cancer. And it is a cancer that is in the bottom of your esophagus by the stomach. It is usually caused by GERD or acid reflux. There are other causes. Symptoms are not being able to swallow, not being able to eat. My advice to everybody here is if you are getting a colonoscopy, also get an endoscopy, which goes down the throat. There is another test, which is called Endo. It's a real simple test, but you can talk to your doctor about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Donna Carr.
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. Um, I don't remember if it was last meeting or the meeting before. I brought up about my neighbor who was always complaining about me, whether it was me building a castle for my kids or building a drawbridge with a moat, and the city was always showing up. And I talked about another person who said that they had solar lights. Well, I found out it was more like a Hatfield's and McCoy's, but at the same time is, the person that lived next to me, um, he was an elderly man. He used to call my kids Screaming Banshees 'cause he didn't like kids playing on a trampoline. Um, in the situation of this Hatfield-McCoy-type situation is, the gentleman who has up a whole mess of cameras, he's, he's, uh, eighty years old, and he has a meth head son. And the other people, they faced, uh, 'cause his cameras are high on a pole, he faced, uh, bright lights at the cameras, trying to block them from looking into their yard all the time. Now, just to say is, they have gone to court, they do have an injunction against the old man to stop harassing them. And when you have somebody like the crackhead son going over and trying to set your property on fire by throwing a cigarette, and it didn't work, so they lean down and try to use a lighter, to me, that's a little bit too much. And when you have an injunction, something should be done to stop this kinda nonsense. Uh, and I guess I look at it with the way my situation was, in that these people shouldn't have to be putting up with this old man and all the trash that he wants to continue. They busted out windows out of their cars. Things need to calm down, and the cameras need to come down. You can't be looking in somebody else's yard. It's none of your friggin' business. I have a neighbor, he's got cameras. I asked him, can you keep an eye on my cars in the street? And he said, yes, I will. But he won't shine the cameras into my yard, because it's none of his business. And he appreciates the fact that, you know, I keep an eye on their property when they're gone. I don't have cameras, but I do keep an eye on their property. But, and I also keep an eye on the property on the other side of me. But what I'm saying is, the cameras need to come down. You need to stop sticking your nose in other people's business. I guess I still believe in the philosophy of live and let live, and I don't give a care what you do, mind your own business about what I do. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor, city staff. My name is Michael Yudin, 2304 North Cortez Road. Property from south of the hitching post, we have a sovereign citizen, burying all kind of stuff, and he finished the one lot, now he start the second one. Nighttime, usually they work, rooted there, dust control have a problem, they don't, dust going every directions. Now he building the huge mound, and it's gonna be issue in the future for the safety and hazardous for the floods or water, what direction it's gonna go. It's could affect Cortez Road because I have a six-foot culvert underneath of my property. They're starting off from Cortez Road, coming all the way to Highway 88 to that property. Flood could backed up on that area also. And now, last time he had that property, he has sign on for sale, sale rocks and all of the stuff, he was selling it. I don't think the gentleman have a business license. Now the signs over there stating that clean dirt for sale, and I don't think he have a business license. He consider himself a sovereign citizen, but he's okay to use our roads, and we pay taxes for those, build the roads, and we pay taxes for the lights, we pay taxes, all that stuff. And now, few citizen came to me and asked me this, don't you think that your property value is gonna be destroyed or is gonna be flooded, your parking lot and all that stuff? I said, I talked to the city official, development service, they said it's not a weak wash out of their jurisdiction. But now those people thinking about it, putting the pipes on and cover it up, the dirt, and make their property valuable also. So this gentleman is starting it, and it's gonna get bigger, some other people are gonna start doing that, it's gonna become a pattern. Maybe we can look into it, maybe we can have some kind of code, maybe we can have a law, something set up to protect the other citizen. I would greatly appreciate if you guys can look into it. Thank you very much.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Andre Meek, 1327 South Bell Air Road here in AJ. Last meeting, had a gentleman come up asking for an ordinance or looking into an ordinance about feeding the birds. You're messing with me. I feed the birds, but not to the extent I see some. I know there is problems with them. I've seen a house that's not all that far from me, and they probably got 300 pigeons hanging around it. And yeah, that's a problem, you know? I throw some seed out, I get the quail and the doves in the yard, and I'm happy with that. But, you know, you're gonna, you'll cause a riot from all the old single women in town that feed the birds. So, you know, I'm just asking you to tread lightly when you come thinking about that because the silent majority, you know, they know how to come after you. So that's all I have to say.
Any comments? Yes.
Can we direct the city to look into the area brought forward and see if there's any violations that this guy's doing?
Yes, we are aware, we are aware of it, and Rudy is already quickly taking a ton of notes, and he and I eyeballed each other, so yes. We have a couple things there. There's a few things going on there, business license, zoning issues, other issues, drainage, so yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see some kind of a report regarding all that, because I drove by it today, and the amount of fill they've put in there, it's gotta be approaching 10 feet above Highway 88.
Yeah.
And it used to be below Highway 88.
As was one of the residents myself on Cortez. That's, I see it every day, and I did see the sign that he put up, and it was where he was asking for fill, and now he's selling out of the property out there.
Thank you, yes, we'll be looking, we've already started looking into it, yep.
Any update on the birds? The ordinance, do you have an update?
Yeah, we are studying that, and we will be presenting a presentation at a work session, either first meeting or second meeting. I can't remember when we were gonna do that. I know the first meeting in January, we're swearing in, but it might be the second.
Can we look into a support group for maybe the old ladies who may?
The old ladies that feed the birds?
Hey, careful.
I take, I take real bad exception to that, considering I'm one of them.
You feed the birds too?
Me too.
I feed the birds.
If you're not single, this is good then.
Feed the birds.
Okay. Well, I will, we first off, I close the business tonight. I want to wish all the council, all the city, a Merry Christmas, and there, there it is. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and everyone in the community.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Yep. Merry Christmas, everybody.